To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So let's pray. Almighty God, you created the heavens and the earth in the fullness of time. You made heaven upon earth and instructed us to make the kingdom of God present on earth and so you allowed man to establish institutions to govern it, so that what is in heaven was in earth. Therefore, Almighty God, look upon all your civil government leaders of this nation and of this place of Homer Township, Homer Glen. Bless especially Stephen, Vicki, Michael, Michael Robert Angel, Karen, Brent, and Michael, and thou them with the virtues of wisdom and prudence and fortitude. Bless their good intentions, as is your goodwill, and bless all of us and grant us long life, health, and salvation. For you are holy, our God, and we give glory to you, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, now and ever and forever. Amen.
All right, trustee Rivera.
Here.
Trustee Claussen.
Here.
Trustee Benomo.
Here.
Trustee Shay here. Supervisor Balage.
Here.
We have a forum.
Okay, next, I'm going to call for a motion to open a public hearing for the Homer Township FY year 2024 budget appropriation ordinance.
I'll start the motion.
I'll second.
I'll take a roll call. Trustee Bucklaussen.
Yes.
Trustee Shay.
Yes.
Trustee Benomo.
Yes.
Trustee Rivera.
Yes.
Supervisor Balage.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Before we enter public comments, we froze the everything again, so there will be no tax increase again. So since we've been here, there's been zero tax increases three years, three times, and the first time we cut twenty percent of the dollars off of it. So, you know, everyone can look at us and see that we're not taxing out of your house. And every time we freeze the tax, just so everybody knows, when we freeze the tax, that means we're not taking the new construction. There's a lot of construction. So that means that when that money comes in, we're not taking any of it, so that means it lowers your property tax and the township's taxes. So it's so important for everybody to know that by freezing it, we're saving money. Then we're going to go on to the public comments.
Here is now.
Okay. Are we going to do this one next? We might do the second one first. Now, motion approved. 25, tentative budget as presented and published by founders, bond founders, crossing general, general assistance, open space, part, part of the belt for contribution account fund for fiscal year April 1st, 2024 through March 31st, 2025.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Okay, I'll take a roll call. Trustee Shay.
Yes.
Trustee Rivera.
Yes.
Trustee Claussen.
Yes.
Trustee Benomo.
Yes.
Supervisor Balage.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
The motion to end public hearing and return to the rubber meeting. Make a motion, somebody.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, I'll take a roll call. Trustee Rivera.
Yes.
Trustee Shay.
Yes.
Trustee Benomo.
Yes.
Trustee Claussen.
Yes.
Supervisor Balage.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now we're going to move on to public comments.
Okay, it'll be one second because I need to get my timer going.
And so everybody knows, everyone has to be signed in which they are, and they'll get three minutes per person.
Yes, give me just one second, please. All right, we'll start with Christine Nasser of Priscillan Farms. You can go ahead and stand up, and you can talk right from there, okay?
Stand there.
Yes, please.
My name is Christine Nasser from Priscillan Farm in Homer Glen on 143rd Street. First of all, I want to thank everybody for the pet fest and what they're doing for the farm, because it was very lovely, I think, for donating their time to Priscillan Farms. So I asked you to kind of come in and say something kind of for everybody. Do you mind if I stand over there?
Sure.
Because I want to address people over there.
Sure.
It's kind of one of the older people from Homer Glen right now. I've been here for twenty some odd years, and I own a farm with horses that are all rescued, so I think everybody kind of knows what I do. I rescue animals that other people don't want, they're on their way to the blue factory. We rehab these animals. These are animals that are vicious, they want to kick, they want to bite. I give them time, love, and energy. My idea in life is that every human being, every living being, has a good side to them. So as I say that, and we bring these animals back to loving, caring, kissing me, I'm kissing them on the lips, all the good stuff, I think about the pros and cons of Homer Glen and everybody fighting for what they think is this and that. I voted in the recent polls on my heart, not my, what most people wanted me to do politically. So I jumped out of my, what was my comfort zone in my politics, and voted for what I thought was the best for Homer Glen right here. So I don't want to get into that, Democrat or Republican. These people right here are fighting to keep this a really good community. I came from a town, Bridge in Hinsdale, and we always said town, this is a community. And I love this community. They have really come to help me a lot, and I'm hoping that I'm helping them with ideas and things like that, which I never thought I would do before. So I want people to understand that everybody has their ideas of how things should go, but everybody has to look inside of everybody else and say, there's good. I want to see people saying it's half-full, not half-empty. I'm so tired of the infighting with everybody in Homer Glen. We have to come together because for what we're fighting for right now, and everybody's doing this infighting, it is so miniscule to what's happening in the world with people and fighting and wars and starvation and abuse and animal abuse even in here, and elderly and child abuse. We have to stop that, we have to be put together. So I love this community, so everybody stop the infighting, please, please.
Thank you. Regina Robinson. Regina? Do you mind coming this way so we can get you on camera? Thank you. Thanks, Regina.
I've been a resident for twenty-eight years. My husband and I have been involved in every activity that's gone on in Homer Township or Homer Glen as volunteers, every one. We're involved in the incorporation of the town. This open space land acquisition was made to preserve, back in the day, the nineteen ninety-eight open space preservation referendum passed to overall legally by representatives of Homer Township in an effort to preserve a portion of the township, township's historic rural character from the rapid urbanization approaching on the area. It was passed twenty years ago that the land would be open space for passive recreation. In the twenty years, and this has been a while longer, because I gave this presentation once before, the taxpayers probably had paid between an extra five thousand and ten thousand dollars added to the property tax to pay off the bonds by open space. The Ozley Grant, which was how this all came to be, repeats over and over again, at least six times in the compliance for approved projects, that all farming and operations and non-recreational uses shall cease in perpetuity, over and over again, no organized, no commercial, anything. That's from the government. This puts a government entity in competition with our businesses and already struggling businesses to stay open by building some kind of a commercial social that isn't open space available to everybody. Read the Ozley Grant, it'll say it over and over again. I think we have a lot of issues with the water bill, huge tax increases that we just received this month, gas, food prices, I don't think anybody wants to start paying anymore for, to support extra personnel, equipment, or anything else when this was meant to be beneficial and enjoyable to everybody, open space, period. There should be picnic benches out there with pavilions, bike path, walking trails, nothing that's shut off from the general public.
Three seconds.
Read the Ozley Grant. And whatever happened to the town center by the senior housing, it's planted, it's over there, meant to be for open space.
Regina.
And a building for a town center.
Regina, your time is up, but thank you very much, okay?
Oh, thank you. And the Tchutina Farm is on the way west corner of town.
Regina.
Where there's nobody, all of the.
Regina.
All of the subdivisions are up by that planet.
Regina, please, you've got your three minutes, thank you very much, it's up. I don't give a knee, nothing's done. Okay, Jan Noworski, please.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jan Noworski. I live in Joliet, Illinois, seventy-one years old, I'm an Army veteran, graduate of college, been married this past May twenty-fifth, fifty years to my same woman, and also celebrating my fifty-year graduation anniversary this year also. Married and graduated, same year. I am here in support of Steve Balage. When Donald Trump was indicted on those counts of felony, thirty-four felony counts, it was a dark moment in U.S. history, never happened before. Prosecuting a political opponent has never happened before. Clinton was not prosecuted for lying under oath.
Please give us time to speak.
Shut the time.
Or you will leave.
Is this elected here?
Served, please take her out of here.
For what?
Please take her out of here.
Thank you.
No, it's not. I asked the question, it's elected here, which is illegal in a public meeting.
Respectful to the letter.
That figures, college student.
Pardon? So he's not told to leave?
I have to.
Order, please, thank you. Please give respect to whoever is speaking, so you will get the same. Thank you. Okay?
Clinton was never prosecuted, and he lied under oath. Yes, Donald Trump was accused of misdemeanors that the statute of limitations ran out of, so the prosecutor changed it to a felony, which is illegal, and he should be disbarred for that. What's happening in America now, and I'm getting to Steve Balage in a second, what's happening in America now, Stalin would do it as well as any banana in the public to try to get their political opponents out of the way. On every coin and every dollar bill, it says, "I plurb as uno," out of many one. And that's what we're all supposed to be as American citizens, following our Constitution and trying to become one, the beacon of freedom in the world. Liberty can, people can become whatever they want when they have liberty, okay? Liberty does not mean one party or the other giving away a lot of stuff and saying everybody's equal. That's not liberty, that means you're a slave. In God we trust, God is God of the Bible, God gives us inalienable rights, it is the source of our moral values. Rights come from God, not from man. If rights were given from men, men could take them away. With the exception of the Civil War, what we are seeing now with the persecution of a man that wants to make America great again, this is the greatest internal battle for in American history. Steve, on that day, by the way, I'm going to quote the American flag, U.S. flag quote, okay, Steve, on that day, as his right as to speak freely, to think freely as an American, decided that that was a dark day in history, and he decided to fly the flag upside down. Second statute in the American, U.S. felony code, the flag should never be displayed with the Union, star, blue, cannon, down, except, except, as a signal of dire distress in instances of extreme danger. He has a right as an American to say, this was a dark day in America. So Steve, keep your chin up, you did the right thing.
All right, next, we have Katie Schlatman. Schlatman, phone, sorry.
It's okay. Nobody can say that. Hello, Homer Township, Homer Glen, Village of Homer Glen. I'm Katie Dean Schlatman. I am, I grew up here in Homer, my family still lives here. I myself am an Air Force veteran. And when we talk about the way we treat the flag, I know many people are upset because an individual decided that on a day they felt distressed, they were going to fly that flag upside down. Now, dire distress, for anyone who's ever been in dire distress in our country, knows what that means. And for me, when I was serving, that day happened, August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two. That happened for me when thirteen members of our Marines were killed in Afghanistan, when our current administrative government in Washington pulled out worse than they did in Vietnam, in my opinion. Now, I wasn't in Vietnam, but talked to the Vietnam vets, I felt it was almost as bad. Billion dollars worth of things left there. So in my mind, I've been flying that flag in distress for a while, on top of everything that goes on politically. And unfortunately, we have the infighting in Homer to either publicize one side of Homer or the other. This is America, and I'm an American, and whatever is done to that flag is how one American is protesting to another. I'm waiting for some of these other elected officials to come out and get upset when other places pull down our flag and put up the Palestinian flag.
Yep.
Where are those elected officials then? Because in my mind, that's dire distress as well, because people aren't respecting the flag. But unfortunately, I fought and served, so everybody who has an opinion has that right.
Yep.
Now, there is actually a Supreme Court case from nineteen seventy-four. I believe it is Spencer v. Washington, meaning Washington, the state of Washington, where a student was flying the flag upside down, and it went all the way to the Supreme Court because at the time, I believe there were shootings and different things going on there and felt that the country was in distress. That case was heard, and it was shown that putting the flag up, upside down, is protected under that as a sign of distress. Disrespecting that flag, if I put it upside down because the country, I feel, is in distress, we're overtaxed. We've got other things going on.
Ten seconds.
Service members, you know, overseas who aren't being treated right, veterans coming back that are having issues. We are in distress. I feel distressed.
Thank you, Katie. Father Thomas.
My name is Father Thomas Loy. I'm the pastor of Enunciation Byzantine Catholic Church in Homer Glen. It's on Wilcock Road. It's the church that sits on the prairie, it's surrounded by the prairie. It's got the golden blue domes, it's a Byzantine Catholic church. I'm also a stakeholder in Homer Glen because I was there when we were building our church, it was the same time Homer Glen was being formed, and they asked us, all the residents to be stakeholders, we sat at these big tables, these big maps, and literally drew and formed Homer Glen. So also, my church, we solved, if we built our church, if we developed it with the prairie, we actually solved a water problem, which to us was not a problem, it was a gift that two counties could not even solve. So I am invested in this community, I live again. I was watching TV, and I see on the news about a township flying a flag upside down. And they said it was Homer Township. They didn't give any names, though, so I thought to myself, I think that has Steve Balage on him all over it. So I called Steve, I said, Steve, was that you? Were you behind that? He goes, yeah, yeah, and some people are disagreeing with me. I said, okay, all right. All right, I'll confess eight words for its worth. The flag, as you can see here, the flag is used in different ways, symbolizes different things. Right now, it's just here quietly, we pledge allegiance to it. Sometimes it's flurried, it's a sign of victory. Sometimes it's a hat, a half mast, when somebody dies, right? And as we heard, it's also a symbol of distress. And I believe that what Steve was doing, what former township was doing, like turning a flag upside down and flying it that day, and many other people, the notable people did too throughout the country, was not so much about Trump, really wasn't about Trump or Democrat, Republican. It was about expressing that our country is in distress. It's about, once again, what we witnessed in that trial, it was not about Trump, it could have been anybody. It was about, once again, a glaring, glaring example of how our cherished institutions, all of them, education, government, justice system, all of them have been commandeered as venues to push ideologies, and their integrity, upon which this country was founded, has been eroded. That was a distress, not Trump, not Democrat, Republican, conservative, liberal.
Ten seconds, please.
But our, the integrity of our country, our institutions. I would like to propose personally, Steve was a prophet, and he was honest, and I propose that this country, that this country, every institution, civil government building, should fly a flag upside down.
Yep.
Until we can recover the integrity.
Thank you, Father.
Of what this country was founded on. Thank you.
Can I please ask for quiet and no comments while someone's speaking?
Sure.
Thank you. Mike Dean.
Our institutions are under attack.
Mike, please excuse me one second. Can everyone please be quiet?
I heard the word bigot here. I heard the word shaking her hand, that was my daughter up here talking. She has sand on her boots. I don't know what father would want to see her daughter in a war, though, none, not even me. You should read the book, Peace, it's about the military, and how he talks about how it's under siege right now by our government. It's a disgrace what they're doing. People nod their head yes or no, or whatever it is. But I actually want you to go out and read the book, and in the front cover of this book, there's a flag, it's upside down.
Yeah.
It's an upside down flag by a hero who tried to serve our country, and our politicians took him out of that major that he was because he was going to serve for January sixth to help him protect it, but no, they took him out. We are under siege in this country, big time. And if anybody here had people served in the Revolutionary War, I'm going to talk to them afterwards, the Civil War, World War I, World War II, my relatives all did, some of them died, some of them lived. So I have a big case in this. And what I see going on in this country, and Father already hit it with the, with all these institutions under attack, they are. Name me one that isn't. Name me one. CRT, DEF, in our school system, never should be there. Faith, never should be in there, going after Christians. You see, the Jews can't even go to school in my country that we served in, can't even go to school. Shame on us, shake your head no, because I hear the same libs always say it's good. How shameful. I cannot believe what's going on in this country. I served, I was spit upon, I limped still, and I got Agent Orange. And if anybody served in Vietnam, they know there are three hundred thousand men are still dying of Agent Orange, and nobody really cares. Yeah, we're under distress, and I put my flag under distress because that was my daughter up here, and I said, you can always put your flag upside down, like I did when Carter gave amnesty to fifty-eight thousand men. Some of my old friends died. Wasn't that great? Come on back. Shame on us. Vietnam, spit upon, calling the disgrace, college people, I came back to this, this country here, and if you were talking, oh, you were in Indus Silver going over there, kept quiet.
Mike.
Nothing.
I have to cut you off.
I understand. Can I get two more minutes from the board?
I motion to give.
I motion to give him two more minutes.
Really?
Yeah, really.
Our lives have changed in the last four years. I wish I could read Pete's final words about his own kids going into service, even though he was ousted. He loves the country so much, he would bring his kids into the service. This guy here, who served, he takes a flag, puts it upside. I have done it before, before Steve has even done it, back in seventy-nine. Nobody made a big thing about it. Neighbor came over to me and said, why is it upside down? I told him, what? But this is the American flag I fly now. And already talked about, I saw the one soldier here, my name was Sergeant Dean in the service, now I'm a patriot. I'm Patriot Mike Dean, a patriot. And that's what goes back to our Revolutionary War, they were patriots. I heard Marines talk, I heard Army talk, Navy, Air Force, but when you talk about a patriot coming out of his houses and fighting for his right, that's what I'm going to do now. I'm fighting for my right. And if my right is flying this upside down, I'll do it. I understand now that people have different views about the flag flying it right, I do all the time, but right now, no. It is in distress, and it isn't because of Steve. I guarantee it isn't because of Steve.
Five seconds, Mike.
It's because what's going on in this world right now. God bless everyone in this world, and God bless America, and we better start praying for the Jews, because remember, Hitler wanted to destroy them.
God bless you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, Ellen Moriarty.
I'm going to read a statement of the church by a longtime Homer Township resident, Nancy Hackenberry. She couldn't make it in time to sign in and we knew that there would be no exceptions made for somebody who I couldn't sign her in.
Okay, please come up to the front.
So I'm here tonight to talk about a history of this board doing whatever they want. For those who haven't been paying attention, Steve Belich and his board have been projecting their personal views on the township since they got elected in 2021. In September of 2021, with a mere 200 signatures from a local church, this board made a proclamation that Homer Township is a sanctuary for life. There was no public input, just a proclamation that voted on, was voted on and rubber stamped. Many citizens are pro-choice. Many of your constituents are pro-choice. You're supposed to represent all of us. Those who spoke out were labeled as baby killers, of course. In October 2021, this board made a resolution protecting this Second Amendment. Did they ask if anyone was anti-gun or pro-sensible gun laws? They did not. It was voted on, rubber stamped. These proclamations and regulations, resolutions are not laws, nor do they have any legal power. They are simply this board proclaiming that what Homer Township believes is what they believe. And that is so far from the truth. So check that, checkthatchange.org. 947 signatures want you to step down, Mr. Belich, for flying my American flag. That flag there belongs to me. This building belongs to me. You want to fly it upside down in your home? That's fine. That, that's what you do. You don't fly my flag upside down. You don't make that decision for me. We open every meeting with a clearly Christian prayer. In 2021, 2022, 2023, the township displayed a large nativity in front of the township. Is everyone in the township Christian? Did they ask? They did not. Changed rules, discouraged and mocked people asking about other holiday displays, religious displays. Those who spoke out at a township meeting were called Satanists and berated in public comments and given the finger. Right after she told everybody how we needed more Jesus. Which brings us to the upside down flag, another instance of this board projecting their personal, political, religious, and ethnic beliefs on every citizen in Homer Township.
Fifteen seconds.
Okay. What did they think they could get away with? Why did they fly it at the township but not at their own homes? They did it because they have gotten away with it in the past. They are not acting on our behalf, nor do they represent us. They need to be voted out in 2025.
Ellen, you're done. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Jessica Barnes, resident of Homer Township. The views I'm sharing today are my own and do not represent any group. I'm here tonight to talk to you all about some simple math. 600 is greater than 200. About 200 signatures is what you got from a very conservative church in Homer Township to make a symbolic declaration of the entire town of Homer being, or Homer Township being a sanctuary from abortion. You didn't ask any other churches or any other denominations, and you certainly didn't ask the residents of Homer Township. Further on, your own few signatures is all it took for you to declare that immigrants are not welcome in Homer Township. Your two-way declaration also didn't have any input from anybody but yourselves. You're supposed to represent all of us here, not just yourselves and your own views. But you continue to put your personal opinions ahead of everybody's views. This includes a member of your own party that you squelched her vote to actually take her election from her. Then you took it upon yourself to fly our nation's flag upside down. When I called you to demand you to fix it, you didn't want to talk about the flag with me, Steve. You wanted to tell me all about how Trump was gonna save us all from the distress. And I told you like 10 times, I'm not calling you to talk about Trump. You and I will never see eye to eye on that. So let's just talk about the flag. And you didn't want to. This is just another example of you and your board shoving your political views down the throats of all of us residents. You don't represent me and you don't represent a lot of people here. And it's really getting embarrassing. This petition on change.org asking you to resign has almost 1,000 signatures. Now let's be fair, let's be fair. 60% of the signatures on here are from local people. So let's just toss out the other 400, okay? So we have 600 people. Now 600 is still greater than 200, right? And 600 is definitely greater than zero. I might not know a lot of stuff, but I can do math. 600 people want you to resign. So why can't you go ahead and declare that by your own math logic that more than qualifies you to make that kind of declaration? Other towns laugh at us. Businesses don't want to come here. People don't want to shop and eat here or move here because of the reputation that you have carved out for us. Everyone that lives here needs to stop being apathetic and start speaking out, or we're gonna continue to be on Reddit and the news and not in a positive light. Listen to the will of the people for once this time, because I know how to do that math.
Three minutes. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Steve, Steve Kennes?
Camdons.
Camdons? Of course.
Camdons.
Camdons.
Hey, Pete, hey, brother, welcome home, man. I lost my father from the Agent Orange. Lost an older brother in Vietnam. Got a deployment myself, so I hear you, man. Man, thanks for wearing the American flag. I had my American flag shirt on today and I got into it with my group, my, with my own business. Can you believe that? Yes, I did. And you know what? I'm not a Republican, young lady, and I'm not a Democrat. I'm talking, so don't get me wrong here. I'm a libertarian constitutionalist. I believe in the Constitution. I believe in the Second Amendment. Our guns will never go away. Never. If they want my gun, they can come and get them. They get them bullets first. I serve my country for the Constitution. There's nothing wrong with flying that flag upside down. Nothing at all, young lady. I will go get 1,000 signatures in the next two days for that man. And then your math will be done. The thing we got going here is just too much divisiveness. There's not enough heart, like the one lady said. I have heart. I know what it's like to lift a kid off the ground and give him some of my food. I know what that's like. But my country is in distress. Okay? Big time. When I got brothers at the VA that can't get the proper treatment and we're taking care of migrants and immigrants left and right, that appalls me. Very much so. There's nothing wrong with taking care of this country first and then we can help each other. For everyone that comes here, it costs $77,000 to house one inmate. And that's what it costs per migrant. Now who's gonna pay for that? Your county just, they didn't raise taxes on you. But guess what? It's coming. It's inevitable. It's coming. You gotta support what you want. Hey, am I, can you video me? Do I look good? Is my hair in a place? I don't know, man. I just, you know, I just wish everybody'd get along, like the one lady said. You know, there's, there's faults on both sides, but you can't beat a man down in a council that hasn't raised your taxes. I mean, that's just common sense. That's just my point. I'll, I'll get some signatures and then we'll see if we can end, right?
Hello. I'm here to talk about item 9D, which is 143rd Street. A couple sentences down, it says that it's disappointing that the village still hasn't followed the Homer Township's meeting and has not filed a lawsuit. As of 4 o'clock today, there was no lawsuit filed on behalf of the township. So unless I'm missing something, you can inform me after the meeting. That would be great. It also says in here that, that you urge, Mr. Portillo, that you urge residents to reach out to me and find out why we haven't filed the lawsuit. But I'm just, maybe you should follow your own advice because you haven't reached out to me one time since you've been in office, except for to yell at me in public. So I really appreciate it. If you guys wanted to have a conversation about the township, the village, and are standing on 143rd, I'm happy to talk to you about it. Many residents have. Now regarding this flag, thank you, Mr. Dean, for Patriot Dean. Thank you, veteran from Juliet. Thank you, all the veterans. I have to say a few things. I am pro-Second Amendment. I am pro-life. I am a Republican. I'm not mad that Mr. Belich felt the country is in distress. I agree. Our schools are in trouble. Our groceries are high. This country is in serious trouble. As mayor, I don't have the authority to fly our flag upside down. I only have the authority to fly the flag at half mast. That was the disappointment I had, Mr. Belich. As I stated, I am a Republican. I did not like, and I still don't like, what happened to Mr. Donald Trump. But I don't have that right to speak for everybody in the village. If you wanted to fly your own flag upside down, good for you, proud of you for that. However, doing it on a municipal building, we can't, in my opinion. I also, there was comments made about the village, our other officials not stepping up or saying anything about the American flag. That is not true. Our board had recognized the boys from North Carolina who held the American flag up. We actually sent them a Patriot Award from the village of Homer Glen, and we did recognize them at the village board meeting. We also recognized our Boy Scouts who put out 380 American flags for six holidays throughout the village. I'm sorry, I'm not feeling well. I just got off of flight. I do think we need more God in this village. And I do think that the infighting needs to stop. We can't get anything done. I'm asking for everybody to stop. Ms. Crispin from Crispin's Farm, you said it perfectly. We're not getting anything accomplished.
Steve, I'm sorry.
Oh, your, your time is up.
Oh, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Teresa Cassanda. My husband and I have lived here for 39 years, raised our kids. Our kids live here. Our three kids live here. We love this town. A while back, at the village of Homer Glen meeting, Steve called me and several other residents communists because we spoke out about open space. I don't think you know the definition of what a communist is, and I'm gonna ask you to look it up when you go home. It's time you look in the mirror before you name call. This lady here asked that we all get along. Needs to start here. It needs to start at the top, not the bottom. So myself and the other people that were called communists were still waiting for an apology. Will not hold my breath. My husband and I were appalled that the American flag was hung upside down. This flag is not a Republican flag and it's not a Democrat flag. It is an American flag. It was, it represents every man and woman who put on a uniform, fought, and died for this flag. And I thank every one of the veterans in here for that. We have a lot of veterans in our family. We have veterans who have died in our family. And we do nothing but respect the flag. We, as homeowners, my husband and I, we fly American flag properly every single day and have for over 35 years. The flag is up 24 hours a day. It has a light on it when it's dark. And it's, it's flying all the time. And it flies that way, not upside down. Then you fly the flag between Memorial Day and D-Day, two of the most important days in all of the veterans in American history. I don't understand why you would do that. If you don't know how to respect a flag and you don't know how to care for an American flag, ask a Boy Scout. They will teach you. There are so many great things that are happening in Homer Glen, but the shenanigans and the disrespect are what we see on the news. And I'm sick of it. I'm just sick of it. We never see anything good that's coming out of Homer Glen on Channel 9, or Channel 5, or Channel 7. We only see crap. And I'm really tired of it. Maybe it is time for you to step down. Father, you said it was, it was not about Trump? It was definitely about Trump. He got on, it was in the paper and quoted, he was angry because of Trump. This flag is not Trump's flag. It's our flag. It's not our Republican or Democrat flag. And until everybody understands that, we're never gonna get along.
Two seconds, please. Three, okay, you're up. Sorry, Teresa.
Okay, Mike, thank you for your service. And thank you for your comments about we do need to get along better.
Dominic Patella.
Hiding, hiding.
You can, you don't want to.
Your pants are there.
Ron Portillo.
Happy Father's Day to everybody from yesterday. I'm not a veteran. My mom had brothers that were in the military. My father had siblings that were in the military. They fought World War I and II in Korea. And what they told me when I was a little boy was they fought for freedom and democracy. That's what they told me. Freedom of choice. So everybody knows what the First Amendment is. The First Amendment allows people to protest and speak their mind, whether it's good or it's bad. Everybody does it. Everybody remembers back during COVID, the BLM riots, people were killed, businesses were burned down, looted. That's one end of the extreme. Right now Hamas was mentioned. People are taking the American flag down and flying the Hamas flag in its place. They're terrorizing college campuses. This is all their right for, of choice and to express themselves with protesting. It's all over the place. And even we see the rainbow flag replaced at schools of some of the American flags. It's a form of protest that my relatives and the other people that have fought in this room and have relatives in the military, they fought for freedom and for the right to protest. However they want to protest, whether it's good or bad, we all have to accept it. As a Catholic, it's very difficult for me during Christmas time to see the non-Christian displays at the, at the administration building. But you know what? It's a freedom of speech and I gotta keep quiet about it. But it upsets me greatly, but that's what it is. It's a freedom of choice and it's a protest that's allowed. So we heard a number of people come up here tonight and signify what it, what it means. And it's distress and it's allowed through the code that was brought up by this gentleman over here. So what I'm, all I'm saying is that democracy and freedom is what everybody fights for. And it doesn't matter how they protest or express themselves, but we have to accept them. And that's all I gotta say. Thanks.
So I pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, right? Last part of that goes with Libra- Last part of that goes with liberty and justice for all. Justice for all, not just for some, justice for all. This was not about Trump. Okay? Trump was the last drop because we kept seeing everything going on where these people are getting punished and these people are not getting punished. That's not justice for all. According to Steve's press release, he said he believed there needs to be a conversation happening about what's going on. We need to have a conversation about all of this, okay? And this is a good start, okay? We can argue about it, we can debate about it, we need to have it, the conversation has to happen. Is the country in distress? I mean, you can argue about that too. What does distress mean? Is it live fire? Is it mortars coming in? Is it hostages? Or is it that our constitution is actually being destroyed?
Yep.
Steve, some vets in here speak up, and I've talked to a bunch of vets myself, and some of them are for it, some of them are against it, some of them are in the middle of the road, but the one vet that I'm going to take my wisdom for was the guy who came out and gave an interview on the 80th day of D-Day, the 80th anniversary of D-Day. I don't know if you guys saw the interview, and I apologize, I forget the guy's name. But he was telling a reporter with tears in his eyes, "We fought for this country. This is not the country we fought for." "This is not the country that my friends died for." This guy was there on Normandy, right? With tears in his eyes, he said, "I do not recognize this country anymore." Okay? That's who I'm gonna listen to, the guy who's actually there. Okay, equal justice under the law is the glue that holds our constitution together. John Adams, you know, is a good example of that. Boston Massacre happened, they wanted to string up the red codes in the streets. John Adams took a lot of crap for defending those red codes, okay? He said, "We cannot start this country, okay, the way we want to have it without equal justice under the law." He took a lot of crap. People were attacking him, his friends unfriended him. We didn't have Facebook back then. So do we have equal justice? Are we in distress? So we got people that could burn down cities for months and murder 12 people, injure 2,000 police officers, cause billions of dollars worth of damage, and practically no one goes to jail. But then, on the other side, we have basically a燃石火fire happening, okay? Look it up, I only have 30 seconds. And then the Capitol, and it was one day, 700 people go to jail. Okay, that's not equal justice, okay?
Thank you, Jimmy. David Orich, or Orich?
Close enough. You're a. You're a.
I am a Lockport resident, I live in Willow Rock, so I am also a former township resident. I am on the side that I do not agree with what Mr. Balich did. What he did was raise that flag, and it was our flag, it's really all of our flag, it's our township. And you represent all of us when you did that. If you want to do that at home, I echo that sentiment too. Have at it. I have people that fly stuff all the time around me that they might get a one-finger salute when I drive by, but that's their right, and that's my right. That's freedom of expressions, and that's our freedom of speech. So do it at home. I walk my dog by Brent's house all the time, he didn't have the balls to do it. He flies it the way I like it though, so I mean, I'll give him that. The other thing I want to come up here and say, I mean, there's no on and on about the flag, a lot of us feel strongly about it. Like I said, do it at home, whatever. The other thing that I do in this community is that I'm an election judge. I have been an election judge since 2018. I was a Democratic election judge, this last year I became field technician. We're really hurting for people, and we need people, like, a lot of you have said, "We need to come together, we need to do this together." And then you guys go right into a story about how you demonize one side and go after the other side, and now your side is right. We need both parties in the election. We are low on both parties being represented as people that are doing election judge duties. And we get demonized by, I'm sorry to say, mostly Republicans, but people come in and they say like horrible, like that we're stealing the election from them. We're your neighbors. I live in Willow Rock. I am, like, the people I see coming to the polls are people that I talk to every day. I'm an election judge, and we need your help. Please, go to the Will County Clerk's website, see if you qualify. If you don't qualify, and maybe you know somebody that does, get them to go. They are also taking high school students, you have to be 16-years-old, and you can get credit for community service. They can do that, it'll look great on a college application. We need people to be election judges. Please, please, just go to the site, see if you qualify. I mean, you'd have to declare one way or the other, and I think like the only requirement, I don't know all the requirements, but like if you declare a Republican, you have to vote on the Republican primary. If you declare a Democrat, you have to vote on the Democratic primary ballot. That's really the only thing.
Five seconds, please.
Thank you.
And David, on that note, I think they're also paying $200 a day now for elections.
Oh yeah, you can pay. You don't need to pay.
I thought it was 200.
You gotta pay every night five, and you leave by 5:00, because I'm one block. So I understand what he's talking about.
Okay, Heidi.
I'm not gonna stand up, but I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm, I'm an advocate for community and community flourishing, positive things happening, and people respect each other, and everyone can have different opinions and different beliefs, but by bringing up the negative constantly and rehashing it and failing to move forward isn't going to help the community grow. That's it.
All together.
All right, Dan.
All right. To get started, I have done all I can do for this community from being a poll watcher, an election judge, a PC, precinct commitment, and a trustee for this village. We need to, and we were a business owner in Homer Glen also. I have seen the vision in this room, I have seen the vision at village board meetings, I've seen the vision in our township. We all need to come together. This is not about one group or one person. What it comes down to is it takes a leader sometimes to do things that are out of the ordinary. And with that said, it's not easy to be that leader. I've been in hard places myself with the things that I've done for our village currently. We had the big thing, it was mentioned about open space, there were all the people out there with their pitchforks and shovels, telling us all about Walter Farm and open. But, just four or five meetings ago, I had to change it from ES1 to OS1. It wasn't open space, it was under 50 acres, there was a bill that was going to be passed, or they wanted to pass, if it was under 25 acres, that didn't go through the House. Nevertheless, let me move on. When we take and we represent a community, we have to think about everybody. It isn't about one person on that side, one person on that side, it's about all of us. We are a community. So, when that flag was flown upside down, I want to say one thing, under Section 4A, A, and B of the flag code, it calls for that flag when we're under distress for it to be turned upside down. I get it, some people say, "Not my flag on a public building." I kind of get that, but then I don't. You know what? We have 24,500 people that live in the Village of Homer Glen and the township combined. With that amount of people, there's more than, there's 50%, I would say it's 50/50 even at this point, right? But, we have to, we have 365 days in a year. So one day, that flag was upside down, saying our country is under distress. For that reason of what everybody has spoke to tonight, everybody is kind of right, we are all right, we're a community working together. But for turning that flag upside down for one day represented the portion of people in this community that support that. So when the flag flies for 364 days out of the year upside right, it takes a leader to do things that are out of the ordinary. Now, I looked it up, just like when it came to open space, I looked it up to see if a municipality couldn't do it, or a village couldn't do it. I found nothing, and I asked legal also, there is nothing that says anywhere that the commander in chief of a village, of a township cannot do that. So for the people you represented, you shouldn't step down, you should step up. You did the right thing for the people in this community. It's what they deserve.
The man in chief.
It's the end of public hearings.
Thank you, everybody.
Approving eye to approval of minutes.
Okay, we're gonna continue with approval of minutes. First, I'd like a motion to approve the May 13, 2024 monthly township board meeting minutes. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, motion passes, thank you. Next, I have the motion to approve and to release or not release the November 23, 2021 executive minutes. This is our.
I'll start the motion.
Second.
I'm sorry, motion to not release, okay. Thank you, clarified, clarified. I'll take a, all in favor? Ayes?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, motion passes. Motion to approve and to release or not release the May 19, 2022 executive minutes. I'll make a motion to approve or not release. Okay?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays?
Guys, we can't hear up here.
Any nays?
Go outside if you don't want to be quiet.
Okay, motion passes, thank you. Motion to approve and to release or not release the October 17, 2022 executive minutes.
I'll start the motion, not release.
Not release, okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, motion passes, thank you. And then finally, the motion to approve and to release or not release the May 13, 2024 executive minutes. I'll make a motion to approve or not release.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, motion passes, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who attended the Pet Fest. It was really, I couldn't believe how beautiful the day was that day. The weather was amazing, there was a cool breeze, a lot of vendors under the tents. And I especially want to say thank you to Giada Rode, who spearheaded all the volunteers. She got over 20 volunteers to come out. I almost felt like I had nothing to do. So it was wonderful, I mean, I really got to enjoy myself that day, and it was just amazing to see everyone bringing out all their dogs. Someone actually brought a turtle, a little girl, I think she was like seven, she put the turtle cage in her wagon, and she actually went to Pet Fest with her wagon, she was just so adorable. I couldn't stop making pictures of her, it was so cute. And I do want to say again, thank you to Giada with her leadership, everything ran very, very smoothly. I want to also thank our sponsors, our vendors, and of course, everyone that came out to enjoy themselves that day. So, thank you very much. I think it was a successful event.
And now we're gonna move on to my report, 143rd Street. Do we have a lawsuit filed? Just, the mayor's here just to let you know, we're going on our fourth judge now. So every time a judge gets this case, they turn it over to a different judge, so now it's going for status. And our attorney said we have a good case, but in my mind, I can't understand why these judges are afraid to take the case. And, so that, you know, I don't have an answer for that, but we're going on the fourth one now. So, we're still moving forward, and then July 11, we're gonna have the new judge, whatever his name is. And then we'll see if he keeps it. Originally, I was told it's gonna be about six months, so that's not a short time. So it's gonna keep going, and I hope that we get a judge soon, because then it actually goes to trial. But until we get a judge, it's still in status. It's bent by it all. And then we need a motion to approve a change in the registrar to the township upon completion of the transaction between the Henry Savings Bank and the Credit Union, communication of the. So what happened was, we have a bond, and the place we had the bond out of went out of business, or decided to sell another bank, so now we have to transfer to get the new names. So do I get a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. I'll take a roll call, trustee Klassen?
Yes.
Trustee Shay?
Yes.
Trustee Benomo?
Yes.
Trustee Rivera?
Yes.
Supervisor Balich?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Okay, the next one's a motion to approve a special use permit for Zonia case, ZC24-030 from A1 to C4. We voted on this particular case back in February, and it's going to the planning commission finally in the county. And we were in favor 100% as a car, I mean, a truck dealership, it's not a trucking company, a truck dealership, and they average like five trucks a week that they sell. It'll bring in a lot of tax dollars, and it's at 147th and Archer. And there's nothing there right now except wheat, it's by Homer Tree. So it's a good, it's gonna be good for everybody, and, you know, we, our planning commission already did vote on it, and then I sent another letter to the county saying that we liked the project. I was, been in discussion with the lawyer for the truck dealership, and, you know, it doesn't seem to be any, it could be no impact on traffic, because the trucks, when they come, when they sell them, they jump right on 350 by. So they're not gonna be driving down our streets. So is there any questions on that one? We need a motion to approve it again? I'll make that motion.
A second. All right, I'll take a roll call, trustee Benomo?
Yes.
Trustee Rivera?
Yes.
Trustee Klassen?
Yes.
Trustee Shay?
Yes.
And supervisor Balich?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, we're gonna do a public hearing for the road commissioner now, and he's not raising his taxes either. Need a motion to open the public hearing for Homer Township Road District FY 2024/25 budget and appropriation orders. I'll make that motion.
Trustee Klassen, okay.
I'll second the motion.
Trustee Benomo? I'll take a roll call, trustee Shay?
Yes.
Trustee Rivera?
Yes.
Trustee Benomo?
Yes.
Trustee Klassen?
Yes.
Supervisor Balich?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, is there any public?
There are none.
Okay. Mr. Porfilio, do you have anything to say, or no?
Real quick, I've been in office three years, I've cut my taxes all three years, not froze them, I've cut them. The average price for a $250,000 house in the township is less than a dollar a week, which is about the price of a cup of coffee for the month. So that's pretty low, I think that's the lowest on your tax bill. And I thank everybody for supporting me for all that I do, and I think it's a wonderful township to do work in, and that's about it.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion to.
So it's the Homer Township Road District fiscal year 2024/25 tentative budget as presented and published, equipment building and road and bridge funds for fiscal year April 1, 2024 through March 31, 2025. So it's the Homer Township Road District fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five tentative budget as presented and published, equipment building and road and bridge funds for fiscal year April one, twenty twenty-four through March thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
And then, can I...
We need a motion.
Can I make a motion? I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, I'll take a roll call. Trustee Shade?
Yes.
Trustee Benomo?
Yes.
Trustee Klassen?
Yes.
Trustee Rivera?
Yes.
Supervisor Balich?
Yep.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Then we need a motion to adopt a road district budget appropriation ordinance number H D, H T R D, zero, six, one, seven.
So now we're at D. No, no, I can just call the motion right here. Yeah, so now we're at D.
All right. A motion to come out of public hearing and go into regular agenda?
I'll start that motion. Second.
Was that Trustee Klassen?
No.
Trustee Rivera, for a second, sorry. I'll take a roll call. Trustee Benomo?
Yes.
Trustee Rivera?
Yes.
Trustee Shade?
Yes.
Trustee Klassen?
Yes.
Supervisor Balich?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, Highway Commissioner Porfilio's report.
Hi, everybody, again. A few quick things here. Tax dollars that worked, the twenty twenty-four roadway paving program was just finished. We did over a mile of repaving in northwest Homer Township, including Smith Road, Hundred Thirty-Eighth Street, Hundred Fortyth Street, Hundred Thirty-sixth Avenue, Hundred Forty-seventh Place. The amount of the... All right, so the paving program is finished. Orange Crutch did a great job. They were a little bitter this year. They were ten percent under the engineer's estimate. They got done in three weeks with the entire project. They did a fantastic job. More tax dollars that worked, the twenty twenty-three and four roadway lighting program has been finished, and all areas of the district where there's nineteen miles of road, there are some spots that are dark. So we went ahead and we standardized the twenty-five-foot lighting standard in all the dark areas, and all the small ones that are scattered throughout the township were also standardized for ease of maintenance. That was just finished last month as well. Ditching, grating, and culvert replacement, we're active with that. If any of you know of someone that's having issues with their driveway culvert, or any other ditching in front of their homes, around their streets, that are an unincorporated Homer Township, please let me know so we can help out. This past week, we had three stretches of ditches and culverts that we're gonna be replacing at Dogger and Bruce Road and Hundred Fifty-third Street, Regent's Road. Item nine D, something that I brought up earlier, and Mr. Balich had discussed it. Yes, the township has filed lawsuits for the veto for the Hundred Forty-third Street widening. And I did urge people to speak to the mayor, who I think just left, about them filing a lawsuit to follow suit, because I think the village is against it as well. I hope they are, because there's a ton of residents that are against it. So I have appeared before the village at public hearings and spoken to the mayor, but it's not up to me. I don't live in Homer Glen. It's up to the residents of Homer Glen to speak to her, to plead with her, to also file a lawsuit against Ms. Charent, which is the executive director of the county board. And lastly, I thoroughly enjoyed, we had a float in the Lockport Canal Days Parade on six, seven. The township had a truck and candy, and the road district did as well. We threw out small beach balls, which was a big hit with the kids. They went absolute bombers over them. Oh my God. And then Pet Fest, I co-hosted with Vicky. She did an unbelievable job setting everything up. We had dog tricks, best dressed dog, we had all kinds of stuff going on. We had the adoptions for the pets as well, and all the vendors, and it went off without a hitch, and it was very well attended, even though there was a lot of heat that day. So kudos to all of them, and I really appreciate participating in that, so looking forward to that next year. That's all I got. Thank you.
Brett, do you wanna talk a little bit about the Hundred Forty-first street? How the mileage was long, we had mixed up, they were...
Yeah, so I don't know who in here is familiar with Hundred Forty-third, but on the west end of the township at Lamont Road, there's a full intersection there with turning lanes and everything. And then it turns into two lanes for three miles over to where at Bell Road, it goes back into a full intersection. So there's about three point two miles between those two intersections, between Bell Road on the east and Lamont Road on the west. And two of those three miles are not the village, two of those three miles are the township road district. And one of those three miles is the village. And what I had mentioned a bunch of times at township meetings here every month, is that the road district is willing to take over those three miles from the county if they decide to do so. And of course, if the lawsuit is successful, that will help move that along. If the lawsuit is not won, it will not help that move along. But as there's many residents in here that have spoken about Hundred Forty-third Street widening and the negative effects of it, I would ask anybody that lives along that corridor, do not sell the property that the county is asking you to sell to them for eminent domain, because until the lawsuit is decided, you will not get your property back once you give it to them. So you gotta understand that part of it. There's no looking back. You can't ask for it back if the lawsuit is successful by the township. Very important, very, very, very important. That's all I got. Keep thinking.
Okay, thanks, Brett. And one thing also everybody needs to know, the quick take is stalled in the state. They're not passing it until our lawsuit is done. So this, everything depends on this lawsuit, whether they can do quick take. When the people come to your house and they offer you ten cents for your property that's worth a hundred dollars, they're just trying to steal it from you. But they can't, they can't do anything right now. It's all stalled. So everyone's got, I'm just repeating it. That way, everyone really needs to know it's stalled until the lawsuit is settled. And like I said earlier, they keep changing judges. And I'm gonna do my best if they were out and wanted, because it doesn't seem right to me. So we're going on our fourth one. So who's afraid of getting somebody angry, or who's afraid of having to make a ruling to say no? Because remember, they, part of this project that we didn't know until now is a bridge that's gonna go over the Splaines River. So it'll connect Plainfield through Hundred Forty-third Street to our Hundred Forty-third Street, and then go east to Cicero. So you, you know what? When they tell you it's not an expressway, I don't know what the hell you call that.
Yeah.
That's an expressway. So please, nobody sell your property until this is settled. Okay, Assessor Morella is, no report?
Mike Gondick, you gotta report. Yeah, I got a short report. So the soft appeal period is over since May thirty for the taxes, but next year, starting February first, you can appeal again. If you ever forget those dates, just go to homer township dot com. Those dates are always there. Just remember after the first of the year. Check your comparables against your neighbors' comparable houses. If you think there's something off with your taxes, feel free to do a soft appeal. Mostly what I do is the website. So I'm glad to have a website. Since January, we've got six thousand seven hundred new users on the website. So it's increasing, and I just wanna thank everyone for using the website. My name is Mike Gondick. Email me if you ever have any suggestions for the website. We had a great suggestion to put the calendar on, so I did a program to calendar. It's on the bottom of the homepage. You can see all the events that way, and I plan on adding more things as we keep doing it, but we do things low budget. So that calendar is perfect, but we're not paying anything for it.
All right, good. I think I will move on to township committee and trustee reports, the senior task force. Mike Benomo, chair, Sunil Lahas, the vice chair.
Yeah, one thing I'd like to mention is, you know, with the seniors and veterans, so during the Homer Fest this year, Nancy Algoz has given me an opportunity to once again have a senior day, and we include the veterans as well. All the festivities start at three o'clock. Ask everybody to contact the township at seven oh eight, three oh one, oh five, two two, to let us know that you're coming, because we are gonna feed you, we're gonna provide entertainment, and we have some surprises for you for the veterans. So ask everybody that knows a veteran, show up. It's gonna be a great event, very patriotic, and it's a way of saluting our soldiers to let them know that you appreciate them and what they've done for this country. And with the seniors who I, for the last three years, have given them different events throughout the months and, you know, throughout the year. It gives them a day to enjoy themselves with live music, food, and some entertainment. So I'm just asking everybody to just stop by at our, you know, we're gonna be under a tent, starting at three o'clock on Sunday, June thirtieth, at Homer Fest. Thank you.
Okay, and then next we go to special needs task force, and that's Angel and Mr. Porfilio.
We're waiting for Trantina.
Yep, we're still waiting on Trantina.
We are going to the plan commission tomorrow night at seven o'clock, and once it passes there, then we'll be all set. We should have it up, and hopefully by the beginning of October. The architect and the person running the project, they have it all ready to go. They're just waiting for approval. So everybody knows, we're not using that for making money off of the public by having weddings and funerals and all that stuff. This is for, it's called a civic center, so it's about people. So there's something, there's gonna be something there for everybody. And I've said that many times, we just wanna make it clear. And so one of the people was talking about, you know, what I would call Marxism, you know, having the government own something, then make money, and private people that can't compete with you. You can't do that. It's wrong. So it's gonna go up real soon, hopefully, because I think we met all the requirements finally for the village. Then we'll move on to our resource management task force, that's all the trustees, is pretty much with the founders crossing. Angel, do you wanna talk about that at all?
So founders crossing, the first phase in, all the remaining construction is almost done. We are waiting on one unit to be finished, be painted. It's already been sealed. Everything's been done, but they're still waiting on the paint match, because the company got taken over and they can't match the paint. So it's coming, but it's on that way. So that is it. Everything, all the work looks really good. Everybody got their...
What about the HVAC?
New satellites and everything. So HVAC, possibly we may be getting, we still have a little bit of remainder of that grant, so they may be putting that out to bid to get us like four units done. And then we are going to start concentrating on, the township is paying for getting the oldest units done. So we're gonna convert. So eventually, we'll be converting everything from the boiler unit systems to regular gas forced heating here, yeah. So we're just, we're gonna do that in order of, obviously, if anybody has any issues with theirs, we'll be starting from those, but then we're gonna go in order of the oldest boiler units. So that's something we'll be working on.
And then as far as the grant goes, we didn't get the grant for next year, because there was six million dollars in asking, and there was only two million dollars to give out. So they didn't give most of the people any. So we start again in February of twenty-five, applying for the next round of grants. We have two point two million total, and we got basically about five hundred thousand of them already. But we gotta apply every year.
And there's also some private grants that we can start going after, should we need them, because we're not gonna, you know, have to raise taxes or anything to fix their units. We'll just...
So don't get nervous. We're gonna fix stuff, but we ain't gonna raise your taxes. Okay, then we go on to, we just talked about founders, trustee reports. Any of the trustees have a report? Mike?
I would, no, I'm just gonna say a couple things. First of all, we have some hot days the next couple of days. Keep an eye on the seniors and older, you know, people that live in your community. Just make sure that, you know, they're moving around, and if you see a concern, don't call the sheriff or call someone for aid. Other than that, just, you know, for everyone to be careful, the next couple of days, it's gonna be hot.
About Mike Lawson, just...
Steve, I have a quick note. I just wanted to let everybody know that I, I'm a proud community member. I'm proud to be here, proud to be a part of this community, and I'm proud to be a servant of this board. And we all may not disagree, we all may disagree with each other from time to time. I appreciate everybody's comments. I, like Mr. Fialco, I kinda get it, but then after some research, I don't. The flag was flown upside down for half a day, and it was taken down and reded. And that was Mr. Balich's right to do that. That was all of our rights to do that. And I agree with it, and I stand behind him for that. And I'll always stand behind him for anyone sticking up for, for the rights of this country. And to express yourself when, when it needs to be done, you know? Not just sitting on your hands.
On your own property.
We're not sitting on your hands. Well, I'm not gonna have a debate with you about it, but you're wrong. But you think I'm wrong, and it's okay. See, I mean, it's okay. I disagree with you. But I'm proud to be here, and I'm proud to, to be at heart of this, whether or not everybody agrees with that or not. It's totally irrelevant. I'd like to thank everybody for being here. I'd like to thank the sheriff for being here, Sheriff's Department for being here.
You got anything?
Good.
The, I just wanna let everybody, we were talking about the flag, and I made a statement, so you can read the statement. I stick by the statement, and I don't regret putting the flag upside down. And I did get a call from our state's attorney, Jim Glasgow, who is a Democrat, obviously. And he told me that I did nothing wrong, and that in his opinion, I did the right thing, because the country isn't this risk. And he told me if anyone tries to do anything to bring some kind of a made-up law or interpretation of a law, he said he would not trust me. And he called me himself, which is kind of rare, because the state's attorney himself is kind of a busy guy. He didn't have to do that. So I just wanna make that clear, that the state's attorney did step in. It was after we already took the flag down, because I went and put it up there. I minded it only after the day. But I just wanted to make a point, and then have a lot of people talk about it, which a lot of people have been talking about. Because if you, you know, whether you're, whatever party you're in, or whatever you like or dislike, if you don't start talking about what we're seeing here, we're gonna have a big problem. Because if one side keeps saying you stink, and the other side says, no, you're doing it, we're in bad shape, right? We can't win. The only one winning are the people that we don't want to win, yes, foreigners. And if anybody in this room thinks that, you know, I have no business to say that illegals shouldn't be allowed here, well, that's your opinion. But if you were to poll everybody in the village, the answer is, they don't want it. It's easy to say that we should, that we should let all the illegals come, but when they come, then the people that say let them come will be the first ones screaming, get rid of them. When they came to Joliet, all the people in Joliet stood up to the Joliet Township and the city of Joliet, the town believed. When I filed that illegal immigration law on Christmas Eve morning, you think I had something better to do than sit there and file a law and tell anybody that they drop off illegals here, that they're gonna be sent to Chicago and we're gonna pound the bus? You think I had something better to do? Of course I did. But that's part of the job. You're supposed to represent the people here. And it's sometimes a difficult task. But I just wanna make sure everybody knows that I have no regrets about the flag, and I did not break any laws. So with that, God bless everybody for all your thoughts. Linnamondo County, motion to approve all payment bills for May twenty-four, certificate of deposit, founders crossing bond, founders crossing general, general assistance of the space park developer contribution, carp town, road and bridge, and equipment building.
I can make that motion. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, I'll take a roll call, trustee Rivera?
Yes.
Trustee Klassen?
Yes.
Trustee Benomo?
Yes.
Trustee Shay?
Yes.
Supervisor Balich?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Okay, we have no new business and the old, the old business, the micropantries. We put stuff in there and they're emptying out, prefer we can put it in there. Uh, so please put some food in, dog food, cat food, and whatever else in those things. Okay, no executive session, um, motion, go, Joe.
I'll, I'll start the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion passes, thank you, everyone.